This meeting to order. An executive session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting as authorized by sections 551.001 through section 551.084 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the board determine that any final action, final decision or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed or executive meeting or session, then such final action, final decision or final vote shall be at either this public meeting upon the reconvening of this public meeting or at a subsequent public hearing of the board upon notice thereof as the board shall determine. A closed or executive meeting of the board will now be held. The time is 5:21 p.m.[265.27][265.27](pause) Okay. Chair, if there's one more question?
No. Okay. (end of transcript)
I will entertain motions on the items covered in executive session. Is there a motion to approve the employment of contractual personnel?
Aye, Adrian Stevens moved we approve the employment contractual personnel, employment of contractual personnel as presented.
Aye, Amanda Arabia, second motion.
A motion was made by Adrian Stevens and seconded by Amanda Arabia. All in favor? The motion carried. Six to zero with zero abstentions. The Board of Trustees of Galena Park Independent School District is now convened in a regular meeting on Monday, March the tenth, twenty twenty five, in the Administration Building of Galena Park Independent School District, the address of which is one forty seven oh five Wood Forest Boulevard, Houston, Texas, seven seven zero one five. The time is six oh four P M. I want to welcome the members of the, the welcome the members of the audience to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Galena Park ISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the Superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, Board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by section five five one point zero zero point zero seven one to five five one point zero eight four inclusive of the Texas Government Code. I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Galena Park Independent School District. We have no public comments for posted agenda items today. We do have public comments for non-agenda items today. Patrons who have duly registered per, per policy B E D local may address the Board regarding matters of concern or interest to the, to the district other than the character of any student, staff, or board member. I would like to remind the audience that the comments of the speakers reflect their own positions and opinions. The Board
I will entertain motions on the items covered in executive session. Is there a motion to approve the employment of contractual personnel?
Aye, Adrian Stevens moved we approve the employment contractual personnel, employment of contractual personnel as presented.
Aye, Amanda Arabia, second motion.
A motion was made by Adrian Stevens and seconded by Amanda Arabia. All in favor? The motion carried? Six to zero with zero abstentions. The Board of Trustees of Galena Park Independent School District is now convened in a regular meeting on Monday, March the tenth, twenty twenty-five, in the administration building of Galena Park Independent School District, the address of which is one forty-seven oh five Wood Forest Boulevard, Houston, Texas, seven seven zero one five. The time is six oh four P M. I want to welcome the members of the, the welcome the members of the audience to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Galena Park I S D Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by section five five one point zero zero point zero seven one to five five one point zero eight four inclusive of the Texas Government Code. I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Galena Park Independent School District. We have no public comments for posted agenda items today. We do have public comments for non-agenda items today. Patrons who have duly registered per policy B E D local may address the board regarding matters of concern or interest to the, to the district other than the character of any student, staff, or board member. I would like to remind the audience that the comments of the speakers reflect their own positions and opinions. The board may not discuss or act upon any matter that is not listed under the action item portion of the agenda. Therefore, board members may not discuss the comments of speakers. Please understand that a lack of a response from the board members does not indicate agreement or approval of the comments. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the board. The vice president of the board will be designated timekeeper. Ms. Mari Carmen Soto, will you please set, step to the podium?
Hello, good evening. My name is Mari Carmen Soto, the Energy Efficiency Program Manager at Centerpoint Energy. And today with me, joined with me is Mark Fowler, Program Manager at Key Resort, our implementation partner. And we are proud to present an incentive check that Galena Park I S D has earned for its participation in the commercial load management program and, and in the score program. The commercial load management program pays cash incentives to commercial customers that are willing to reduce peak electric demand and save during critical consumption periods. And the score program pays cash incentives to schools, government, nonprofits, for contributing energy savings projects by providing technical guidance and cash incentives by K W and K W H reductions. The incentive amount that Galena Park I S D has earned in the participation in this program is over three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And I just want to thank the district for its commitment to energy efficiency and congratulations.
Exciting news. Thank you, Ms. Soto. Tonight's invocation will be presented by me, Norma Hernandez, and the pledges of the American and Texas flags will be led by the Galena Park Middle School Army L O T C. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flags. Dear Heavenly Father, as we open this meeting of the Galena Park Board of Trustees, enlighten our minds and stir our hearts that we are able to accomplish what is in the best interest of our students. Please protect our students, teachers, and staff as they enjoy spring break next week. Bring them back safely, rested, and ready to continue the remainder of the school year. Dear Lord, watch over us as we attend upcoming events and celebrate joyful occasions for our students and teachers. In God's name we pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Order, colors. Forward, face. Forward, march. Go, colors. Present arms. Order, arms. Forward, march.
You may be seated. We will now move on this evening's special recognition portion of the agenda. Dr. Moore?
Wow, thanks for coming. Nice to have a big crowd of people here tonight. I hope everybody's preparing for a great spring break. Just a reminder, we have a lot of students sitting in the audience. You know, in about twelve school days or maybe eleven school days, we got this little thing in Texas called a test you gotta start getting ready to take. So rest up on spring break, get, start getting a good night's sleep then. I know that's hard to do, but uh, so you're ready when you get back. So I'm, once again, thanks for coming out. These guys, it's gonna take a minute for them to line up. So, Mr. Arabia, if you'll come, come on up, we'll get going. Oh, one other thing. When the meeting is over tonight, I usually hang around. I have a T-ball game to get to this evening. It's grandpa, so I'll be sketching out of here pretty quickly if I don't get a chance to shake everybody's hand and say hi.
Good evening. We would like to begin this evening's recognition by recognizing all twenty-six campus principals. Principals, please join us on stage. We're not done. In addition to our campus principals, we would like for Zach Fay, Director of Energy Management and Utility Services, to please join us on stage. Billy Hamlin, Maintenance Team Member. Hyman Hernandez, Assistant Director for Maintenance. Carrie LaFret, Lifecycle Specialist. Charles Miller, Director for Maintenance. And they are all joining us on stage for incentives earned in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year through the Centerpoint Energy's Commercial Load Management Program. Much of this effort is led by Assistant Superintendent for Operations Mike McKay and Executive Director for School Operations Lee Ramirez. The Commercial Load Management Program is a good faith agreement. The district joined Centerpoint Energy's Score and Load Management Program to reduce electrical costs during two scheduled and up to four unscheduled events. G P I S D shed a minimum of one hundred kilowatts. Galena Park I S D is proud to partner with Centerpoint Energy to use electricity responsibly, and we're proud of our earned incentives. Please give them a round of applause. Galena Park I S D would next like to highlight the impressive eight school counseling teams for earning the Counselors Reinforcing Excellence for Students in Texas Award, better known as the Crest Awards. This recognition is for continuous improvement and commitment to campus teams and programs aligned with the Texas model for comprehensive school counseling programs. Counselors, please join us on stage as I call your name and your campus. North Shore Elementary School students are supported by Carmela Garcia. Sam Houston Elementary School students are supported by Roxanne McKay. Tyce Elementary School students are supported by Karina Scott. Cobb Sixth Grade Campus students are supported by Jose Garcia and Tamara Cobb. North Shore Ninth Grade Center students are supported by Brenda Charles, Lisa Net, and Mantra Thomas. North Shore Senior High School Tenth Grade Center students are supported by Angie Cruz, Lola Johnson, and Andrea Jones. And the Accelerated Center for Education students are supported by Chandra Adams. And we would like for Dr. Sarita Augustine, the Senior Director for Student Support Services, to please join this awesome group that she leads on stage. The Crest Award is sponsored by the Texas School Counsel Association and endorsed by the Texas Education Agency. These teams provide students with classroom guidance, college and career readiness, and social emotional skills needed to succeed academically. Congratulations to each of these counselors. We appreciate your support of G P I S D students. Would all of the supervisors join them on stage as well? Thank you. Principals? Next, Galena Park I S D recognizes the Career and Technical Education Department for being named a C T E District of Distinction by the Career and Technical Association of Texas. Will Toby Castro, Director for Career and Technical Education, Dr. Melissa Jensen, Program Director for Career and Technical Education, and Jesse Cantu, Coordinator for Career and Technical Education, please join us on stage? And with their supervisors, please join them on stage for a photo. This esteemed recognition celebrates exemplary leadership, innovation, and commitment to student success through high-quality C T E programs. Thank you for making Galena Park I S D a model of excellence and a benchmark in C T E across Texas. Congratulations. Lastly, the reason we're all here in G P I S D, the students. Galena Park I S D recognizes Normandy Crossing Elementary School Fourth Grader Alexa Kennerson. Would Alexis Principal, Ms. Barrett, please join her on stage? We'd like to recognize Alexa for placing third in the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeos twenty twenty-four Spurs Writing Competition. Alexa's poem, "My Colorful Lasso," stood out among thousands of entries in the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeos twenty twenty-five Spurs Writing Competition. This is an exciting milestone. The Houston Livestock Show is the largest in the United States, and it's only the second time in Galena Park I S D history that a student has placed in this competition. Congratulations, Alexa. Thank you. This concludes this evening's portion of recognitions.
Any board member may make a comment during this portion of the agenda without prior posting being required. Comment items may be, may not pertain to the character of any student, staff, or board member, and may not be discussed or deliberated upon at this time. Does anyone have a comment? Dr. Christopher Eckford, Principal of North Shore Middle School, will present the academic spotlight with a video highlighting some of the outstanding programs and initiatives at North Shore Middle School.
All right, there we go. Good evening, Board President, Board of Trustees, President Dr. Moore, cabinet members, senior heads, committee members. My name is Dr. Christopher Eckford, of North Shore Middle School, Hall of Champions, where everything we do is above the line. And I wanted to just take a moment just to give it and kind of introduce some very important people with me that make this ship sit up in the right direction. My very own administrative team, if they could stand up for me. We have Mr. Rubir, Chicago Delac. This is Mr. Michael Young-Samis, he's a new administrator. This is Ms. Stewart. This is Beyonce DeMann. And our very own Ms. Delac, who's much of a sixty administrative, she normally it will be in the summer. And also, thank you. So, here you guys are about to see some of the highlights of the things that we've done over the previous years. Most recently, our location at Glinders, I said that won't happen to be able to get it right.
I do. Actually, this more of a comment. I want to commend you guys, especially the ROTC, LOC crew. As an Air Force veteran, I can tell you that when I was in your age, I had no idea what military life was. And I'm glad you have a great teacher and a mentor to show you the great opportunities that you can have once you graduate high school. So, great job.
Thank you, you guys, for getting a chance to come out and contribute. It's been a long year, and so feel free to come out and join us. Thank you so much, happy to be here.
Thank you.
Left face. Forward march.
We now come to the business portion of tonight's meeting. We invite and encourage you to stay for the remainder of the meeting. However, if you need to leave early, we understand, and this is a convenient time to do so. We appreciate your attendance. Please come again. Mr. Jared Link, Executive Director for Human Resource Services, will present the Texas Association of School Board Localized Policy Manual Update 124 and the District Policy EOC Local Academic Achievement Class Ranking as presented for the Board of Trustees' Review and Adoption at First and Final Reading.
First policy is CTA Local. Financial management goals and objectives recommended revisions to this policy at federal boards disclosure are fully aligned in Texas updated rules regarding federal grants found in code of federal regulations. This guidance became effective October 1st, 2024. It also removed the word designated from the policy with the exception if it's in the place of the superintendent or the board president, not just the superintendent. CY Local Intellectual Property Revision recommended throughout the policy to clarify the circumstances under which the district's intellectual property may be used.
Thank you, Mr. Link. Dr. Ed Martier, Director of Facility Planning and Construction, will provide a 2016 and 2024 Bond Program and Facilities Construction Update.
President, Professor, it's Evan. Good evening. Do you have an update on the, on my? This is 2016 bond. We are still closing out, coming to our high school. We have some financial side items, and we have some more issues. However, elementary is the same. Kind of close that out more, or do that next couple of months. 2024 bond, we are about to, after reviewing it, we're about to do the penetration project for Rose 49. And all of this is just going to be changing out the window, just a couple of weeks, for all the frustrations is kind of not bad. We're also in the final stages as the schematic development for Simran Elementary School, and that's with Natalie Shu as our architect. And we are also working on schematic development for the department. Someone have to say, yeah, I have all that. But Phase Three is already been kicked off, and we're going to use now with Mr. Rubir as the principal, and this staff, and all of that. Any questions?
Thank you. We will now move on to new business. Is there a motion to approve additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies as recommended by TASB Policy Service and according to the instruction sheet for TASB Localized Policy Manual Update 124 at first and final readings?
Aye, Adrian Stevens move we approve additions, revisions, and/or deletions to TASB Localized Policy Manual Update 124 as presented.
I Ramon Garza second the motion.
A motion was made by Adrian Stevens and seconded by Ramon Garza. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to approve revisions to District Policy EIC Local Academic Achievement Class Rank at first and final readings?
Aye, Jose Jimenez move we approve District Policy EIC Local as presented.
Aye, Amanda Erebia second the motion.
A motion was made by Jose Jimenez and seconded by Amanda Erebia. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the interlog cooperation agreement for joint elections between Galena Park Independent School District and Jaceno City calling for the conduct of a joint election pursuant to Texas Election Code and Texas Education Code on May 3rd of 2025?
Aye, Jose Jimenez move we approve the interlocal cooperative agreement for joint elections as presented.
Aye, Amanda Erebia second the motion.
A motion was made by Jose Jimenez and seconded by Amanda Erebia. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the Second Amendment to the North Shore Little League Lease Agreement effective March 10th of 2025? All terms and conditions not expressly revised by this amendment shall remain in full force and effect.
I Ramon Garza move we approve the Second Amendment of the North Shore Little League Lease Agreement as presented. I, Ramon Garza, move we approve the Second Amendment of the North Shore Little League Lease Agreement as presented.
Aye, Adrian Stevens, second the motion.
A motion was made by Ramon Garza and seconded by Adrian Stevens. All those in favor? All those opposed? Show of hands of all those abstentions. The motion carried 5 to 0 with 1 abstention. Is there a motion to approve the video display scoreboard replacement at the Galena Park ISD Stadium by Nevco via buy board contract number 678-22 for an estimated amount of $800,000?
Aye, Amanda Erebia, move we approve the video display scoreboard replacement at the Galena Park ISD Stadium as presented.
I, Jose Jimenez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Amanda Erebia and seconded by Jose Jimenez. All in favor? The motion carried 6 to 0 with 0 abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the video display scoreboard replacement at the Galena Park ISD Nataatorium Daktronics via buy board contract number 665-22 for an estimated amount of $80,000?
Aye, Adrian Stevens, move we approve the video display scoreboard replacement at the Galena Park ISD Nataatorium as presented.
I, Jose Jimenez, second the motion.
A motion was made by Adrian Stevens and seconded by Jose Jimenez. All in favor? The motion carried 6 to 0 with 0 abstentions. Is there a motion to approve the general consent agenda?
Aye, Linda Sherrod, move we approve the general consent agenda as presented.
Aye, Amanda Erebia, second the motion.
A motion was made by Linda Sherrod and seconded by Amanda Erebia. All in favor? The motion carried 6 to 0 with 0 abstentions. With respect to the financial consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote, or take the agenda as is?
Aye, Adrian Stevens, move we approve the financial consent agenda as presented.
I, Ramon Garza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Adrian Stevens and seconded by Ramon Garza. All in favor? The motion carried 6 to 0 with 0 abstentions. The following documents were presented to the board for information. A, Dr. Wanjia Kona, Chief Administrative Officer, presented. Number 1, Early Head Start Policy Council Meeting Minutes, January 2025. Number 2, Early Head Start Update and Fund 205 Expenditure Report Summary of January 2025. B, Mr. Ben Poppy, Chief Financial Officer, presented. Number 1, Tax Collection Report, January 2025. Number 2, 2016 Bond Program Financial Report as of January 31st of 2025. Number 3, 2024 Bond Program Financial Report as of January 31st of 2025. There be no further business before the board at this time. The meeting is adjourned. The time is 6:50 PM.